No difference.
No singing.
No singing.
And no yodeling.
No? No ham.
That doesn't sound...
They're showing this part.
Okay.
I saw it. Really?
I will get over.
You're doing well, Ben.
Yeah.
On the left. Yeah, so there's something.
Oh, excellent, okay. Thank you, Ed.
I saw that.
Yeah.
I mean, you said you had many other meetings.
I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure.
Six or seven matches.
That needs to match.
Yeah.
I got it.
Yeah. Probably got us twenty-six percent. Yeah, so I'm good. So, yeah. Yeah, sure. I'm gonna...
Trouble is, it's only five years.
I'm back.
My business is like a mess. I've been in that too. I've been in that. So, I wanna... Like, try a little bit to...
Screw them.
I'm trying for the... Well, show stress.
I don't know.
Service-related disability. So, probably... And be able to... People create. And I guess I said, you know, you know this. You know, you know this. I wanna do it. I don't know about that. I talked to her with my wife and daughter. So, yeah. It turned out to be the Johnsons. Found out January the tenth. But they couldn't give me the vaccine. Because I was... Because I had... Speaking of breaking up... Would be helpful. It's twenty-five seconds. But then they turned into... Usually, I...
Sure.
And I said, okay, I'm gonna Johnson Johnson. And you're gonna give me five. They didn't want to track all. So now, I'm on my card. If I have Teresa Peterson.
That's special.
As I heard. I talked about, Tony talked about... Being tested or COVID. Some of my brothers, we were friends. And some of them are just... They're telling us she got it. He's okay. He was tested. Maybe thirty times. Because when it first started, October. I was back every two weeks for time. And in Swabia. And once a month, I'd try bottles of blood out. And that went on twice a week till January. Then in January, it was November. It was like, she was four months old. Fifteen.
What was she saying?
So, maybe, yeah.
She had a little bit of... Especially, I mean...
I was gonna say, you are such a test. You show up with that. Wow.
They're becoming things that have passed now and... I don't know. I figure someone everyone else is in here. So, the way it's... It's... We'll say at least with this, I guess. Okay. Yeah. You learn something. Bobby, you're in. We're gonna show them, yeah. Really nice. Right.
I think it's wrong.
I can't... I'm trying to... Wish I could. It's so cute. You don't go how you're headed. No. These tires are hard. Oh, scary. It's just a, it's a car. It was an ice cream. I just thought...
You mentioned the Levis.
Can't leave them now. I don't know what it is. It's like a... It's like a... That you're... It's the early... Sort of mental... Next time, it's always... Yeah. These people are smart. Ben's school, we're actually like George. She's much... So, she's going... I'm not gonna describe the case. Video. I'm... 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 I'm...
Yes, it is.
Oh, but she would tell you. She goes to the board's office. Off the most. I said, trust me. I agree with you.
It's like they're doing a... You're in. On video.
Right. It's like the last one that's working. And then on your corner. So...
Gee.
How are you? Are you?
How you doing?
What do you guys want me to say? Any respect?
Uh, usually, using the cheese always prints.
Yeah.
To the walls. Where they can cover the front.
Yeah, that's why I should say that corner.
Well, he already said, yeah.
I wear every coat. You need to...
This place over here.
You know? At least that's what I...
How you doing?
Doing well.
So, did I have the mic where?
Oh, man. Oh, man. Here we go.
Not yet.
Did you just do that? I thought I'd put my... Geez, how are you? Welcome. Sorry, I haven't done this. I think they're probably... That's very... There's gotta be a way to sort of... I mean, she makes... And I was talking to John. Like, all day. Taking seven... Hey. Doing most things.
They built them.
I think it's a break. Oh. Yeah. It's kind of few. Why else it's like smart? Yeah. Yeah. What do you do? Yeah. Weird. Great. Yeah. Your brain. I think it's one of time bombs. Well, it's... You're only five scouts. Obviously. We have a lot of future out there. It's just... Definitely, I like that. Yeah.
You took your advice about back to the wall.
The challenge.
Except the windows now don't crawl.
Well. Just some of screw over. Joe.
As we tell six and...
Who? So much better. Yeah, that was key. I guess I'm just not...
You have to change your...
Good.
I should go right.
See, I had two of those there.
Wait a minute. You live in Bremen.
I don't think... You know. I'm not quite a one. I wish we...
Well, you probably go remote. Track.
Yeah.
Hey, I'll probably... I'll be... Well, starting on the twenty-third. Yeah.
I can do it right now. Just don't want these kids.
I know. I'll teach you. I could do it now if I could do it one hand. I was like...
If you could do it one hand.
I could not.
Just gotta be on the top.
Not the, uh, not the zero turnus. I don't know.
I can do it if you don't care anything about what it looks like. But it'd be fun. I gotta give it a try. It's not a purchase.
Yeah. I'm probably... I wrote. But it's...
It's not a...
That's my last. Oh. I like that. That's back. Well, I think that... There's a thing, you know, supposed to be...
They do.
You know, we're... Yeah.
We're gonna have a signed seating.
Yeah. So, it's lasting. Yeah.
Just don't make me sit next to you. Yeah.
We've already... We can't. I think, I think there's an ordinance.
There's an ordinance.
Yeah. That's in my upstairs.
I have to tell you this. I think he took the dog for a walk and ran into Sue. Even though Sue was there, he looked for you. Where is that? He's wanting to get the house. And dogs.
We did twenty bucks. Lovely twelve. And I think we... Takes their power, right?
Right.
But that's very hard. Yeah. Um, I did it. No, it's way better. Yeah. I just go... I get out to New York Park. And I got spurred. Yes. That's really nice. I wanted to go down there. When I went on. Yeah. But we saw... Last time.
You're running away.
Yeah. Yeah. It looks like I've distracted you. When I'm done. Yeah. I'm just there. Oh. We need to skate or something. I forgot that was... Yeah. Basically, it was...
I checked. So, it's good that it's all...
Yeah. So, it's that...
All right. It's seven thirty. It's time to call the meeting to order. Once again, Governor Pritzker on May twenty-eighth, signed a gubernatorial declaration declaring a disaster within the state of Illinois due to COVID- nineteen. This declaration will last until the twenty-eighth of June. During this red, uh, declaration, we are allowed to conduct our meetings. We vote for... Joe? Joe?
Yeah? Yes.
I'm mute.
What's up?
Somebody used to mute.
It's just me and the dog. What is the dog?
The dog's market. No. We're hearing, we're getting a radio or something.
I don't think the radio is me.
Who is it? What?
You still hear it?
No, no, not now.
Okay.
Okay.
Don't know.
Well, all right, well, we'll continue anyway. Governor Pritzker said we could do remote and in-person. And until the twenty-eighth, that is what we will do. Attending remote is Village Attorney Mark Schuster, Trustee Joe Nemec, and Village Engineer Jeff Steele. In person, we have trustees, Moreno, Deatley, Harney, Thorne, Village Clerk, and myself this evening. So, we've got a forum. We will continue with the meeting. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America. Into the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Mr. Dattler, here. Mr. Prano.
Here.
Mr. Nemec.
Here. I lost you, though. Can you, can you hear me?
Yeah. You can hear me.
I can't see you, so I don't... You're under my end. It looks like somebody put me in some kind of weird mode.
Hey, just stay put, Joe.
There you go.
Go walk around in the dark. Mister, Mister Zamba. Mister Harney.
Here.
Mister Thorne.
Here.
You have a corner, Mr. President. Okay, please note that according to ordinance in section one dash five dash four F of Village Code, immediately following the Director of Finance's segment of our agenda, there's a period for public comments. Public comments are to be held to maximum of thirty minutes with five minutes per person allocated. Anybody wishing to address the board during this time may do so by placing their name on the list, which is located in the back of the room, or having sent in a request for comments via email earlier today. Also, please note that since we've got a crowd in the room, please, if you have any electronic receiving or transmitting devices on you, please put them in the off or vibrate mode. Okay. Wow. Minutes. We have a motion to approve the minutes of May seventeen, two thousand twenty-one.
So moved, the other?
Second. Moved by the app, the seconded by Harney to approve the minutes of May seventeen, two thousand twenty-one. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being none, uh, since we do have the remote, uh, we will do a roll call, please. Mr. Dattler.
Hi.
Mr. Prano.
Hi.
Mr. Nemec.
Hi.
Mr. Harney.
Hi.
Mr. Thorne.
Hi.
Okay, we've got affirmative to one, two, three, four, five votes. No negative votes in motion, so passes. Minutes are approved.
President Pickett, I'd like to make it a... A then a move here and move that we move the... amend the agenda to move the swearing-in of Christopher St. Franski up in the, in the agenda.
Second. Moved by Deatley, seconded by Moreno to amend the agenda to move, uh, the police and public safety item of authorizing an hiring of a part-time officer to the current time slot. Any comments, questions, or discussion? There being none, uh, roll call again, please. Mr. Thor.
Hi.
Mr. Hardy.
Hi.
Mr. Nemec. Joe. Mr. Nemec.
Hi.
Okay. Mr. Prano.
Hi.
Mr. Dattler.
Hi.
Motion carried. Five affirmative votes, no negative votes in motion, so carries.
President Pickett, I'd also like to make another motion that we approve the hiring of Christopher St. Franski to a part-time police patrol position in the village of Sleepy Hollow at the rate of twenty-three dollars an hour.
Second, Moreno. Moved by Deatley, seconded by Brando to authorize the hiring of the part-time officer at a rate of twenty-three dollars an hour. Name is Christopher...
St. Franski.
Francis?
St. Franski.
St. Franski. Okay. Uh, discussion, comments. Chief, would you like to, uh, make your comments during our new hire?
An opportunity to, uh, after, shortly after starting with the department, I had an opportunity to sit down and talk to Chris. Came in, talked to him in my office. He brings a couple years of experience from the North Chicago Police Department, where he's a full-time officer. Uh, he's also a Navy veteran, currently a reservist in the Naval. For the Navy as well. Um, he's got some good solid background in terms of firearm training and things that I think would be a, uh, a huge benefit to our, our current organization.
Okay. Any of the trustees have a question?
Where's the North Chicago with SAG and Compass?
As far as where we patrol or...
Yeah, my daughter lives in the city. I just wondered, like, where you are.
Uh, so the North Chicago is like great, um, over by Great Lakes by the train. So, over Lake County, not the actual city of Chicago.
Thank you. I'm now on a train, it's been twenty-six years, so... Still don't know my job. Ask me about the East Coast. I got you covered.
He still refers to Chicago as back east.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, there being no other comments, questions, roll call, please. Mr. Dattler.
Hi.
Mr. Prano.
Hi.
Mr. Nemec.
Hi.
Mr. Hardy.
Hi.
Mr. Thorne.
Hi.
Motion carries. Five affirmative votes, no negative votes. Motion so carries. So, for... Given my clerk a reading role. So, we discussed before. Please, I raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Christopher St. Franski.
Having been duly appointed to the position of Patrol Officer.
Having been duly hired to the position of Patrol Officer.
In the village of Sleepy Hollow, King County, Illinois.
In the village of Sleepy Hollow, King County, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
Constitution of state of Illinois.
And the ordinances of the village of Sleepy Hollow.
And the ordinances of the village of Sleepy Hollow.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Patrol Officer to the best of my ability.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of Patrol, position of Patrol Officer to the best of my ability.
Welcome to the village, officer.
Thank you.
Okay. Turn to the regular agenda. Uh, I do have an item on there on the gubernatorial disaster proclamation, which we've already covered. Uh, before I go on much further, though, I do want to take a quick moment and announce that we have lost, uh, not only a village resident, but a former village president this past week. Teresa Petersen was the second woman president of the village of Sleepy Hollow nineteen eighty to nineteen ninety-three. She preceded the first female village president in the village of Sleepy Hollow. That's Carol Shumma, who was seven, three, two, eighty or so. To go in town. But anyway, just thought we passed a card out. I just thought I'd let you all know that Teresa has passed away. That was last week. Uh, okay, back to my agenda. Uh, as you all recall, April sixth, we had an election. Uh, we had one item or one individual. We had three seats for trustee vacant, uh, up for reelection. We had one individual on the ballot, and we had one write-in, which left us one vacancy on the, uh, board. Mister Zembok was that vacancy, uh, was filling that vacancy until an appointment could be made. This evening, I would like to appoint George Hoffman, who's here with us this evening, to take that vacancy of trustee from this point forward. Uh, George has been a resident of the village for, geez, what, fifteen, sixteen years now?
Thirty.
Thirty.
Couple that.
I was close. I was halfway there.
Twenty-nine, actually.
What I see, parallelize, I was closer. Uh, that time does fly. I was on the east side, on the far south side of the east, uh...
Acorn. Acorn.
Acorn Drive. Uh, George has been a member of the original zoning board that merged some years ago to the planning and zoning, uh, when we abolished the, uh, three individual committees and just formed the one. Uh, this last year, he offered his services to, uh, the finance committee as a member of the finance committee. And now we've got this vacancy. George has stepped up and has offered to fill this until the next election, which would be, uh, April of two thousand twenty-three. It'll be the next, so the time, so this seat will be up. My appointment is only until, but only until the next election. So, um, with that, uh... George, you have anything to add to it?
Been a resident of the village for twenty-nine years and been involved. Liked it here, enjoy it here, and like giving back. So, now that I'm retired, uh, it's good to give back, too.
Okay, that I would, uh, like to have a motion to confirm my appointment of George to the vacant trustee seat.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Harney, seconded by Thorne to approve my appointment of George Hoffman to the vacancy of village trustee. Further comments, questions, or discussion?
Three, move before you change your mind.
We got the door down. Uh, there being no further comments, questions, or discussion, roll call, please. Mr. Prano.
Hi.
Mr. Dattler.
Hi.
Mr. Hardy.
Hi.
Mr. Nemec.
Hi.
Mr. Thorne.
Hi.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes. Mister Hoffman is hereby appointed to trustee of Sleepy Hollow for a two-year term. And now we have to take another break and give the clerk another reading. Thanks for the charity. It's very similar to the last time we did, except differently. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I.
George Hoffman.
Have been duly appointed to the position of trustee.
Have been duly appointed to the position of trustee.
In the village of Sleepy Hollow, King County, Illinois.
In the village of Sleepy Hollow, King County, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the state of Illinois.
Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the ordinances of the village of Sleepy Hollow.
And the ordinances of the village of Sleepy Hollow.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee to the best of my ability.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee to the best of my ability.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, the next item, staying with the theme of finance. We have had a resident step up and volunteered to serve on the finance committee that George will now be chair of rather than a member of. Uh, Catherine Maronowski is a four-year resident of the village. She resides in Sharon Drive. Uh, Catherine has twenty years of municipal management experience. Three years with the city of Skokie as a public information, uh, secretary. In the last seventeen years, she's been working for the village of Outgrowth. Uh, as a, she's worked there as an assistant to the Director of Finance. She is currently serving as a senior analysis for the fire department. And Catherine also, uh, has a master's in public administration. So, I would like to appoint Catherine to the finance committee. Motion.
So moved, Deatley.
Second, Thor.
Moved by Deatley, seconded by Thorne to approve the appointment of Catherine Maronowski to the finance committee. Back to the meeting. Comments, questions, or discussion? There being none, roll call, please. Mr. Hardy.
Hi.
Mr. Dattler.
Hi.
Mr. Prano.
Hi.
Mr. Thorne.
Hi.
Mr. Hoffman.
Hi.
Mr. Nemec.
Hi.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes. Catherine is sole appointed. Okay. On that line, George, we do have the new Director of Finance starting next Wednesday, sixteenth. Shortly after that, we probably need to start pulling together the finance committee. Means we do have the audit coming up. They'll be starting on in the next couple of weeks. Expect the audit to be done sometime late August.
So, we scheduled that meeting. Let's get it. Schedule that meeting. I think they, wasn't it, they met quarterly before?
Yes.
Yeah.
When Eugene Van joins us next week, we can, you know... Set, give to them, and, you know, maybe set up some scheduling. There'll be a couple of items you'll have to watch on those schedules. One of them is the tax levy, which is always due in December. We usually start that right about Thanksgiving. Or Veterans Day, usually. Middle of the first of November, so then it's ready. We have to have it submitted by... Close of business, December twenty-fourth or something like that. It's a really strange thing.
It's the end of the fourth Tuesday of December.
There we go. End of the fourth Tuesday.
Not the, not, not usually the twenty-fourth.
Okay, that's close. It's usually get, it's close enough to give us problems. Okay, uh, moving on to the next item under my agenda is, uh, speaking of finance again. Waterbuck and Amen, who has been performing the accounting duties for the village for the past fifteen, eighteen months since the departure of Henry, uh, will now, uh, be taking a support role with the employment of Eugene Van as our Director of Finance. Waterbuck and Amen will provide their personnel to help with the transition of the new Director of Finance and also to provide backup for last year's poll. of the new director of finance and also to provide backup for last year's audit. Since the new director of finance, well, had no experience with the old budget. Uh, we, I felt it'd be best that we kept Alanae around as support for the audit until we get done with it. They have an auditorium to maintain that support and training agreement with us at a rate of eighty-five dollars an hour, which is basically the same rate we've been paying them for the accounting services that we've had the past eighteen, nineteen months. What came in, I believe, December of two thousand nineteen? About seventeen, eighteen months. Uh, so I would like a motion to approve the audit and training support agreement with L and A not to exceed an amount of eighty-five dollars an hour or add them in, not to, we don't have a total amount that we're not going to exceed, but at a rate of eighty-five dollars.
Motion so moved. Second, Harney.
Moved by Thorne, seconded by Harney to approve the audit and training support agreement with Waterbuck and Amen at a rate of eighty-five dollars an hour. Any further comments, questions, or discussion?
What was the period of time, potentially?
Well, potentially, we've got the training of the new director of finance, two to six weeks maybe on that, and then the audit, we hope to have done usually by the middle of September. They should be done at that point. Okay, next item is, oh, yes, I'm sorry, thank you. Roll call please. Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Prado.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes, the motion so passes, thank you. Okay, the next item, uh, with the change of trustees and director of finance, it is time once again to change the signatories with the banks. And in order for us to do that, we must pass a resolution for each financial institution that we do business with, authorizing the removal of certain names and the insertion of the new names so that we can go to the bank in two and a half weeks and change the signatory cards. Because once we pass the motion tonight, that does not become valid with the bank until we approve the minutes on the twenty-first. So if you're wondering why I'm sitting here doing a resolution to put Mr. Van on the signatory cards in two and a half weeks, you now know why, because it's going to take us two and a half weeks to get to that point. So, in your packet, there are four resolutions. Number one is resolution five thirty-four, resolution designating certain signatories with the Elgin State Bank. I have motion to approve resolution five thirty-four.
I move we approve our new resolution five thirty-four to designate the certain signatures to the account of the village of Sleepy Hollow, the Elgin State Bank.
Second, Dattley.
Moved by Brando, seconded by Dattley to change the signatories at Elgin State Bank. The signatory changes will be Stephen Pickett, village president, Eugene Van, director of finance, and George Hoffman, trustee. Any further comments, questions, or discussion? There being none, roll call on resolution five thirty-four, please. Mr. Prado.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes, the motion so passes, thank you, gentlemen. Next item is resolution five thirty-five, resolution designating certain signatories for the accounts of the village of Sleepy Hollow in the Illinois funds of local government investment pool administered by the Illinois State Treasurer's Office. Once again, the signatories on that, uh, financial institution will be myself, Eugene Van as director of finance, and George Hoffman as village trustee. I have a motion to approve of resolution five thirty-five.
I move we approve of resolution five thirty-five as posted here to the signatories for the Illinois State Office of State Treasuries. Prado.
Second, Thor.
Moved by, seconded by Thorne to approve resolution five thirty-five, designating certain signatories for the Illinois fund of local government investment pool. Any further comments, questions, or discussion? There being none, roll call please. Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Prado.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes, the motion so passes. Okay, the next one is resolution five thirty-six. That is a resolution designating certain signatories for the accounts of the village of Sleepy Hollow at the BM All Harris Bank. Once again, those signatories will be one, myself, Eugene Van as director of finance, and George Hoffman as village trustee. Please have a motion to approve resolution five thirty-six.
I move we approve resolution five thirty-six to change the designated signatories for the village of Sleepy Hollow at BM All Harris Bank.
Second, Dattley.
Moved by Brando, seconded by Dattley to authorize the signatories at BM All Harris Bank. Any further comments, questions, or discussion? There being none, roll call please. Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Prado.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes, the resolution so passes, thank you, gentlemen. Last but not least is resolution five thirty-seven, a resolution off, designating certain signatories for the accounts of the village of Sleepy Hollow and First American Bank. Once again, those signatories will be myself, Eugene Van as director of finance, and George Hoffman as village trustee.
I move that we approve resolution five thirty-seven to adjust the signatories for the village of Sleepy Hollow and First American Bank.
Second, Thor.
Moved by Prado, seconded by Thorne to approve resolution five thirty-seven, designating signatories for the First American Bank. Any further comments, questions, or discussion? There being none, roll call please. Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Prado.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes, the motion so passes, thank you, gentlemen. And I believe that is it for the president's report. Uh, clerk, you can have a report. Uh, the only thing I would like to add is that in the past couple of weeks, the village hall's been undergoing a change in our computer systems, and there may have been a couple glitches in terms of receiving emails such as FOIA requests. If anybody listening, uh, tonight or in the future, or anyone in their office today, uh, have submitted a FOIA request and they did not hear back any response from the village uh, within the five, uh, business day required period, we apologize. Please resubmit it, we'll get to it as quickly as we can. Again, it was totally inadvertent and we apologize, but hopefully we get, we'll get things smoothed over here. That's it. Okay, thank you, Tony. Uh, planning and zoning, no report this evening. Attorney's reporter, Mr. Schuster.
I have no report this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Uh, engineer report.
A couple of quick items is recently, we received a permit application for one oh two Thoroughbred Lane Road. Um, it's basically right there at the corner of Thoroughbred and Hillcrest. Is what they're requesting to do is some swale work and a right-of-way swale there. Um, just giving you a heads up, just so when you guys start seeing some work out there, basically, they're just regrading some high points and actually getting the water to actually flow through there rather than having all that dead grass there. So, just to give you guys a heads up in regards to that when you start seeing work there. Um, secondly is, I guess, at the last board meeting, there were some questions, or maybe might have been some questions in regards to that water main replacement, uh, the future, the possible future water main replacement, so I am available for any questions anyone might have.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Steele regarding the proposed water main work?
Hey Jeff, could you maybe just give a quick briefing of the conversation we had the other day about, it's not a wish list, but, you know, what the potential catastrophic failure and what the other issues going to face the village over the next twenty, thirty years as far as other replacements and age?
Yeah, so basically is, uh, obviously you guys are probably aware that that water main is well over fifty years old, which is way past its due date on being replaced. Um, if you recall, is there was that list that was broken up per street is, uh, that was just basically, just to get you guys an idea of if you did this section and if you did that section, however, all those streets listed are actually in dire need of replacement. Um, is basically, any of those could go at any moment, as Kyle is well aware of the breaks that keep on happening through it is obviously, once you get one break, is it breaks a couple of feet down. So it only takes really one section of pipe to really knock out that whole lower section of town for an extended period of time. Um, obviously, is the more time that is passing is the rest of the village is having the same issues. So it's kind of an idea of get the worst section done, which is basically this, and then plan for the future uh, replacement of the rest of the water main. Uh, again, is, as Kyle can attest, is that water main is in really bad shape down at the bottom. Is considering there's rumors that, uh, that water main is actually recycled water main. So where they actually recycled it is unknown, but given if it's recycled and fifty years old is, that's pretty old and a lot of failures could happen. So, just to give you an idea as far as how soon that needs to be replaced and start thinking of being replaced.
And the other thing that you mentioned is that, right now, the pressure's reduced there to try and um, prevent any blowouts or breakages, otherwise, I know we have a couple of, couple of areas now that the fire department has said that the pressure is not sufficient to, uh, for fire protection, so I, that's, you could maybe comment on that, too.
Yeah, so basically, on some of those fire hydrants is when the fire department does their pressure testing is, it is very low. Um, one of the reasons for that is especially upon, uh, is it walnut that's up by the school?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, is, that is actually a dead-end line. And so basically is that line needs to be looped and the fire pressure there is actually pretty low in regards to that fire hydrant. Uh, it's still an operational condition, but obviously you want higher pressures throughout that area. Um, also, a lot of the other fire hydrants is while they're not completely up to pressure is, they're still fairly low and that could be a result of just water main breaks, little small cracks. Uh, that whole lower section is actually, obviously, everybody knows it's the old riverbed, so is, it's very, very poor soils and basically everything's kind of rocking around. I don't know if any of you have been by some of that areas when the holes have been open, but you can actually see the whole ground shake. And basically, that kind of rattles loose a lot of the water mains, so, uh, obviously, getting all of that replaced will help out both in regards to, uh, fire protection and also service pressure throughout the rest of the village for residents.
Okay, these are the figures in front of us, I'm looking at two to three million?
Yeah, that's, that's obviously the worst areas is there, more areas could be added on in the future, just in regards to getting the worst done is a max cost of that three point, what was that, three point, three point two seven million? And again, that's assuming that there won't be any, uh, large Comcast lines or electric lines in the way that we'd end up having to maybe go down the middle of the street, which obviously it adds costs, but it wouldn't be too much extra cost in regards to that, but on the high end to do that.
And I believe, in that real number there, I mean, the number we had to look at, too, is that Brian did some calculations, which I don't think is in this packet, but the last one, as you remember, though, it was, it's costing us about seven dollars a month per resident right now for repairs on that section and the replacement on that with the loan and another, and we figured out it was going to be about seventeen dollars, seventeen dollars a month, so we're looking at ten to twelve dollars a month additional to replace it as opposed to just keep on repairing it, I think is what I recall.
And that's for every resident in the village?
Correct, right now, every resident in the village is paying about seven dollars a month for water main repairs and just about, last night I talked to Kyle, there's a few other spots, but for the most part, they're down in the sections that need to be replaced.
Okay, no. Further comments or certain questions for the engineer or Joe?
Um, just one, I think that, you know, looking at this figures, very big numbers thrown out there, but I think we have to look to the future and say, we need to take action on this sooner rather than later. The longer we put it off, nobody wants a catastrophic water main break where part of the town's without water for numerous days or weeks or whatever it may be. Yes, nobody wants to pay seventeen dollars a month, but I think that's cheap, um, as we look at the future and wherever we're going. So I think we should take action on this, uh, sooner rather than later, and I appreciate Joe's work and then Mr. Steele's work on this as well. So, go forward to move this forward.
Is any of this money in any current budget or any, any, uh, cap, not there is the right?
This is, I'm a sky.
And
We'd, we'd have to I was saying is we'd have to borrow all the money, is my understanding, there, there, we, we have exhausted, we've, we've never depreciated the water system in such a way to pay for future improvement, so it would all have to be loaned. And, and just the other thing speaking is, you know, there'd be some engineering fees upfront, but any of the loans or grants or otherwise, we have to invest in the fees, and I don't know, Jeff, if you calculated off the top of your head, but you, you want to give a timeframe of what it would cost to engineer this and possibly go out to get loans and bids and start to put pipe in.
Especially with, uh, this size of a project is you definitely want to get hold of utility companies that can take anywhere from one to two months. Um, plan preparation permits, uh, because obviously it needs to go to the EPA and actually depending on where actually the water main is going to go is, you might end up having to deal with floodplain issues, depending on the amount of disturbances. Um, it could be anywhere from twelve to eighteen months in regards to, uh, lead time in regards to actually going out to bid.
And, and if, uh, in doing that study, Jeff, would that be, would that encompass all of the intersections on this list?
Yes, yeah, and you could actually extend it out further, too, if you'd like. Uh, obviously, uh, when we do it is, uh, it include contacting the utility companies in order to see if there's going to be any conflicts with them. Uh, basically, design of the plans, preparation of the plans, preparation of specifications. Um, and then obviously whatever work that the finance committee would end up having to do in regards to trying to get the loans, so basically, it could be as much work as you'd end up wanting to do, but it would also encompass, uh, what's on that list.
Would, would the work start prior to having a loan in place or?
Yeah, because more than, more than likely is depending on where you'd get the funds is the engineering is you want to get that done, so basically that engineering could actually happen before you actually got the, any kind of loan, depending on where your funds were coming from for that.
The, the reason I'm asking the questions is, if, if you're saying, uh, you know, twelve to eighteen months before start of a project, then we, we can't wait until something breaks because then we're out. So, how do we begin the process where, Jeff, you as an engineering firm, begin doing a study?
I can, uh, create a proposal for you guys, just like we did for the last water main, uh, project uh, throughout the village, so basically it'd be just like that, is creating a proposal, and then you guys can, uh, vote on it and see if you want to go ahead with that.
Let's do it, reality is here, yeah.
Yeah, and, and then we also face, you know, if, although, what, what would be the shortest timeframe that the project could start, would that be like a twelve-month, uh?
You're talking breaking ground?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I mean, you could realistically Yeah, I mean you could realistically get it done in twelve months. But also the biggest hang up is going to be trying to coordinate with utilities is because obviously if the utilities going all over the places and your design of that water main has to go around those utilities, so hopefully everything should be in a straight line and it should be a fairly linear project rather than having to worry about confliction with utilities. However, is let's say that there's a main line, ComEd line going right through the middle of everything and there's no way that the water main can be relocated is next thing you know is you're going to have contact ComEd in order to relocate their line. And if that happens, obviously then that adds a lot more lead time just because ComEd normally takes a lot longer in regards to that, so but is on the other hand is you could kind of delay that portion of the project and just get done what you can while ComEd is actually doing their portion of the work. But I don't imagine just knowing where all that ComEd lines and Comcast lines and all that are in the lower section of town is I don't foresee any of that issues.
Thank you. I think the main thing we need to do at this point is one Jeff needs a proposal to the board. Hush, Luke. Jeff needs to get his proposal to the board and the finance committee needs to take a look at this and start looking at, you know, because you, we're talking minimum one point two million to three point two million and that's only for part of the village. This could really end up, you know, being an eight to ten billion dollar project. Even the new parts of town are forty years old. Across the line, so Jeff, you can put your pen, paper and start putting together a proposal for the board to consider. And Mr. Hoffman's agenda is just getting longer and longer as the night goes through. Okay, anything else for Jeff for the water main project? If not, thank you, Jeff.
I just wanted to add in, in case you guys forgot, is June eleventh, which is this coming Friday, is the letting for the Sleepy Hollow Road project, so I don't know what time typically you're, it's typically on at ten o'clock, at least as far as broadcasting of the bidding, it's through I dot. However, the Sleepy Hollow Road project is item number ninety one, so is it could take a long time if you want to. Otherwise, you can just look online afterwards, so.
Wait for Jeff and I to pop the champagne cork. Okay, thank you, Jeff. Okay, next is warrants for January seventh, two thousand and twenty one.
You mean June?
What did I say, January? Did I?
Yeah.
Okay, right, a J, right? Okay, for June seventh, two thousand and twenty one, we have motion to approve the warrants.
So moved.
Second to the alley. Moved by Thor and second by the alley to approve the accounts payable of June seventh, two thousand and twenty one in the amount of one hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and twenty three dollars and three cents. Any additions, revisions or corrections or questions? There being none, roll call please. Mr. Brando.
Aye.
Mr. Dally.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Nivik.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes, the warrants so passed, thank you gentlemen. Okay, next item is comments from the public. We've got gentleman in public, is he here for comments or? He is?
Yeah.
All right.
I have one.
Did you sign in?
I have to fill out a form online.
All right. If you'd like to speak personally, I'll take your name and we'll put it on here.
Sign Brian.
Brian. Last name Brian?
P I R, T O.
Bro, on the line, sir. First off, the assign in is Mr. Hans May, yes Hans, what's up?
Good evening, everybody. I'm here on behalf of the Sleepy Hollow Service Club co-president. I just want to fill you guys in a little bit what's going on this year. So we are still going to do things such as the fun run, the fishing derby, the parade. We will still have entertainment, Lenny's is going to play again this year for us. We are going to take all the tents this year, spread them out throughout the field, bring it out a little bit, spread it apart a little bit. This way people can social distance to a point. We will have cleaning supplies and paper towels and stuff by the tent, so people wipe down the table if they feel comfortable or whatever they want to do. We will not be doing games this year out in the fields, but we will be doing pony rides, ice cream. We're going to have some back toss games if people just want to throw bags or something. We will have the car show this year. Only thing, big thing we're not going to have this year is the fireworks due to the limited amount of permits that the state of Illinois issued as well as double, almost doubling the cost and we cannot afford that. So we are considering doing that possibly in the fall on Halloween, we will get a lot more for our money and have a really nice show then. Let's see what else. We are looking into getting two food trailers to come in this year to make it a little bit different. This way, everybody's not on top of each other. The service club will still be doing the beer. And that's pretty much it. Just kind of wanted to give you guys a rundown so you kind of know what's going on with the Fourth of July.
What time is the food trucks and the?
That's what we're still trying to figure out, so probably roughly hopefully getting them there by eleven o'clock or a little earlier. I'm sure they'd need a little time to warm, get things hooked up and warming up their products, so I'm hoping before the the parade we have.
Great steps off at noon or eleven?
Eleven thirty we did last year. So we're going to pretty much do the same thing from the school around again.
Last year.
I'm sorry. I'm not counting last year. It was my birthday a week and a week and a half ago and I don't count last year.
We just went from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty one, I don't know.
Yeah, so, yeah, so it'll be the same.
Okay, the the main thing is basically when the food trucks are done in the afternoon, there's no fireworks.
No, then, you know, if we party a little bit later instead of trying to get the tents and everything down at three o'clock, which never happens, you know, might go to five o'clock or something a little longer, people just slowly, you know, slowing down and need to go home and take a nap, I don't know. The Lennies were playing from eleven till four PM then? Yes. So, okay, just wanted to give you guys a rundown so you know what's going on.
Appreciate.
Thank you.
Sure thing. Brian. We've got five minutes.
Only about four and a half, so you shouldn't have to time it to do that. All right. So I just like to say a few things in relation to along with sheds and Sleepy Hollow. I was hoping to have an open discussion with the board members about the topic, but I was told my questions are not business related. So at this point I'm relegated down to just speak for only five minutes about this topic that I've got about a little over a hundred residents right now currently signed on. And we're just trying to find an equitable solution to. I didn't really find the five minutes to be the right venue, but again, this is what I'm being allowed to do, so I'll publicly speak now until maybe we can get a better format in the future. So we understand the process the village would like us to follow as far as a referendum and going through planning and zoning committee. We feel that this process is just not adequately set up for such a complex issues as this. Now, on June ninth of sixteen, the board actually passed a motion saying that the board meetings would be held in advance, public hearings discuss complex issues. I believe that this is a topic that requires such meetings. A referendum for or against sheds is not adequately conveyed to the voters what specifically sheds mean. Many residents I've spoken with who are not quite a yes right now express that they would be if they knew the parameters of such an ordinance in advance. And going into a P and Z hearing without properly reviewed plans is just a waste of our time and money. I mean, these issues could be ironed out, the board members of both committees were willing to engage in talks in advance on work behalf of the residents concerned. Many issues that could arise at a public hearing could be sorted out in advance. I'm asking that these committee members put down their own opinions on sheds and help work towards a compromise on both sides towards a solution. I would also like to propose informal public meetings with all the village residents to have an opportunity in a roundtable setting to discuss this topic further. I don't find it productive to have to come back here every two weeks and spend five minutes talking in order to counter or compromise other opinions and ideas about sheds. If the plan could get worked out in advance of P and Z hearing and a board meeting, many of these unknown concerns could have already been worked out. The members I represent do not want to be on a one sided issue. We want to be able to find an equitable compromise on both sides. The village could do more to help alleviate this problem that has come up time and time again and presented to this board and ignored. This issue will not go away, it can solve many other issues in the village like financial incentives and current code violations. This issue has been postured on a pedestal of beauty concerns and heritage. But in twenty sixteen, when the village was full of bankrupt, this board had no problem sending requests to P and Z to consider allowing sheds. Ultimately, two weeks later with no public hearing, the village abandoned the idea with comments from P and Z. I personally would like to know the circumstances surrounding that entire affair because it shows me that the board would do what appears to be financial reasons to allow sheds unless of residents' objections to sheds. There are many other hard truths that are difficult to defend against when it comes to the argument of beauty and open space being a reason for not allowing sheds. And as I stated before, my members, we're not interested in a conversation that involves them not willing to compromise to the opponent's sheds. Likewise, they're not willing to listen to opponents that are not willing to compromise their opinions. If your argument is going to stand, as long as your happiness comes at the expense of your neighbor's happiness, you are not part of the problem, you're part of the problem, not the solution. So like I started with, the concept of simply speaking at a board and commenting about this issue seems ridiculous. Our group of supporters have a ton of questions, suggestions, counter arguments when it comes to the topic of allowing sheds in Sleepy Hollow. We are asking the board to consider helping to facilitate this conversation between all the residents so that a compromise can be found. For an issue that has lasted decades and will continue to be an issue as homeowner demographics keep evolving, it's inconceivable if the board continues kicking the can down the road and hopes that it goes away. I would like the opportunity to further discussions with the members of the committees either together or separately if they're not willing to help solve the issue. I'd rather not spend next two years till the reelection comes down. You come here every two weeks, take up your time for a problem that should have been sorted out years ago. My contact information is going to be readily available with members of both boards and I encourage you to reach out to me with any questions or help you're willing to provide. I will personally be reaching out to each of you as well on your village emails, however, as the clerk stated before, there may be a little hiccup with that, so if you have any other ways of being met or we can wait till the software system comes around. But I'd like to have an open dialogue about it, it's really what I'm getting at, it's I I've got maps, I've got ordinances that have been drawn up. You know, I I've got members across the entire village, it's not just east side, it's just not west side. We just want to, we just want to have a conversation about it, you know, see who's for, who's against, which of reasons are, what we can do to counter that. Just a roundtable rather than yelling at each other.
Did I say something?
Okay, typically, George, this is not a Q and A.
Okay.
This is for the time for the public to address the board with their comments. This is a business meeting of the board trustees. That is why originally, Mr. Purtle, I did not give you an eight o'clock slot for a discussion. Discussions on sheds have been held in this boardroom ad nauseam. The comment from the board has been and was, as repeated not three weeks ago, they would like to see a referendum from the majority of the people. We get a few phone calls, we get a few emails, nothing happens. To pass a referendum, while it may be a non-binding referendum, would at least give this board a loud and clear message as to the total acceptance of shed within the village, not just a half a dozen people that keep coming back for public comments. The process for obtaining a referendum on the ballot is something that the residents can do and have been encouraged to do numerous times through the years. It is not a difficult process. Ask any of the members sitting on this room, they have filed a petition to be on the ballot to be elected. None of them ended up having to spend a ton of money to do this. An easy process. That has been suggested, as I said, numerous times. Let the villagers have a chance. You can craft the question, sheds, yes or no, you will get the the pain gone within this room as to what that will work like. Okay?
Can I respond or no?
You can respond.
I mean, um, yes, I understand where you are with referendum and I'm fine with that and I guess hearing that from the board saying if we, because I understand they're non-binding and all that jazz. If if we could have some sort of feeling from the board where as a referendum went through that they would be on board with it if they saw the majority, I think there's a misunderstanding if that's considered as a non-binding.
Said, if they see the majority of the residents are in favor of this shed issue, you're going to have a conversation with this board and you may get it to move forward or it may not move forward. But what they're waiting for is the whole of the village to have an opportunity to weigh in on this.
Right, and I think what the deeper problem that we have, not just following the referendum is the fact that, yeah, I mean, I'm just, I get it, we can do the referendum, I can, I've got lawyers, I can craft, I'm not worried about it. But, you know, in its most simplest state, if the referendum is going to say, should we allow sheds in Sleepy Hollow, I can make it a little more complex, but I can't draw a page long thing. Many people that I've spoken with, very many of them are very much, I would approve sheds, but I don't know the parameters.
This good, this sets the precedent.
Do we, I need them to see these parameters, I need something.
That's going to start the conversation to set those parameters.
Yeah, I guess that's what the purpose is going to be, is that no.
If they want to see the parameters, then they should vote yes and then see what the parameters are. Then come to the public meeting and tell the board, no, I'm not in favor of this parameter.
Okay, so there's no.
That's that's where the real work starts, is if you get the referendum and we get six hundred people to say they're in favor of sheds and two hundred to say they're not in favor of sheds, then the board should say, hey, we got a six to two group that wants sheds, let's talk about sheds. At that point, we go to the P and Z, we start hammering out what is acceptable within sheds.
Okay, so there's no avenue to have like a something roughly drawn up to show somebody like, this is what we're looking at, because I have many people that think we're going.
Say that, you can tell them that and then you can present that to the board with the referendum passes.
Okay, yeah, I, yeah, I just, they see it, people have a vision of what sheds are when they see the word shed, when it's completely obvious what it is.
Not what I'm presenting, this is not what we propose to present to the board. What would you present to us? That's, you know, show them, tell them what you can present to us.
Right, I I can, I mean, I can give you what we've got, I just don't have any more public avenues as the village board does to put that out there and say.
I have no public yet, you know, that was in my meetings, right?
You do have access to a website.
I've got volunteers, if you look at my website, I'll have people tell me that it is so out of date, it has so much misinformation out there.
Yeah, yeah, I have my concern to the website as well, but again, I don't have control of the website, so. But that's, I guess, yeah, we're trying to find more avenues to reach more people to get a deeper conversation than just simply going with the throw it on the ballot and let people make up their own opinions.
Pretty much going to have to throw it on the ballot to get the conversation started in this one.
Okay.
Because until this board sees affirmative movement of the majority of the people, I'm not going to sit here and say I want studs twelve inches on center with, you know, a no steel roof or something, you know, we're just not going to go into those issues at this point until we see the the movement of the of the mass of the people.
Okay, and I I realize it's insane, the next thing I'll say is far out, but I just want to throw it out there to throw it out to you. But in any ex, in any way of expediting that timeline, I mean, take for granted the last tax increase we tried to do, we have four hundred people vote on it. Is there in any world, let's say arbitrarily, that I could get? Is there in any world, let's say arbitrarily, that I could get 600 signatures? Would that be enough to motivate you, or you need to wait two years to get those 400 people to vote on sheds?
Let's get those 400 people.
Yeah, alright.
Because I'll be honest, if you come in here with a petition, 600 people, I have no proof that they're residents of the village of Sleepy Hollow, that they're elected, you know, that they're registered voters of the village of Sleepy Hollow.
I mean, I give you names and trusts and signatures that you could verify.
The, the county clerk verified for me. There are registered with the voters, so we've got that. We know that the message is going to the voters, and they're responding to us. Okay, you know, we've already had emails from people that don't even live in the village saying, I'm in favor of sheds.
Oh, it's, yeah, I mean, I know it's a wide reaching, but I'm saying like an official, actually, like a dress signature, but we can do it the harder way too.
Okay, now, we've got a few items to read, Jeff, this evening. Ah, okay, these are a few that were left from when the change of the email system a couple of weeks ago. Jasmine Cottick says, hi, we're on Christopher Court and would like to support a boat for sheds. We need the garage to store vehicles, boat, and trailer since the boat is not allowed outside in the winter and the trailer in the summer. With the large yard we have, it would be helpful to have a place to store our lawn equipment. It's been frustrating to own almost two acres and pay lots of property taxes on a property that we cannot store anything on. Please consider allowing sheds and increasing revenue for the village that way. Brian, this must be Brian P., you, Pearl?
Maybe. I didn't have an early one. It's not sheds though, is it?
Submission to the village, meaning there's a growing popularity for the village to consider sheds within its borders. I'm asking the village to ask.
About a month ago, that was the one that got lost somewhere.
Okay, that was one that got lost.
I'll save you that one.
Okay, thank you. We've got one from Stephen Griffith, to whom it may concern. I'm in support with the proposal Brian is putting forth for sheds in the village of Sleepy Hollow. The current proposal is taking into account maintaining the aesthetics of what makes Sleepy Hollow a unique place to live, while also giving homeowners the option to build an outbuilding to store personal belongings. I personally have been wanting to build a shed on my property to store lawn equipment outside of the garage since moving into the neighborhood. Thank you for reading this. Uh, next one, oh, this one we read before, Lontac. Uh, okay, this is from Jessica Cow. Good morning. You have heard from us numerous times, but there seems to be more families coming into Sleepy Hollow to find additional storage or sheds to be necessary. We are one of those families, but we have lived here nine years this year. We had a shed when we moved in, and three years later, when we moved in, and three years later, we were forced to tear it down as we were told it was not grandfathered in. We face daily fines otherwise. We have a 1956 home with, in a two-car garage space, is tight. I can tell you, working for a home builder, two-car garage standards are much different now, often with nine-foot doors and additional square footage. We've currently rented a storage unit to hold what our shed would hold for about 200 a month. We would love to invest money into Sleepy Hollow. The plan for a standard shed was implemented, and we had to pay one-time construction fee to build with an annual inspection fee similar to our annual stickers to Sleepy Hollow. That could generate some much-needed income to the village and give some additional space to the families that like to enjoy our outdoor space. I ask you to please consider once again. I do understand that some neighbors want the natural views, but if given the flexibility to even build up against our home out of sight, that would be greatly appreciated. Shed should be required to match the home and be reasonably sized. Thank you for your time and consideration on this matter. Ah, Jessica De Nuzo. We would like sheds to be seriously considered and approved. For seven years, we have dealt with parking in our driveway as opposed to our garage because we have no place to properly store our property maintenance equipment. Similarly, our yard has suffered due to storage issues, and we feel our property would have added value and cleanliness if we had a step of shed storage. We also feel that it is a target for our house to have more vehicles outside, as well as our mower. The vehicle break-ins increasing, it would be great to have the additional secure area. We're willing to pay a fee, inspection, and maintain the standards of Sleepy Hollow. Jessica and Richard Parson. Uh, then we've got another one from William Seabree. Yes, to sheds in Sleepy Hollow. Follow-up from Alice Grace. Uh, no, Alisa, Alicia Saxon. Hello, we would love to have a nice, well-maintained shed that matches the look of our house so that we may keep our riding lawnmower and get some of the numerous outside kid toys off of our driveway and ultimately look much nicer. Having that extra storage space would also allow me to finally be able to park my car in the garage. Which would be especially helpful in winter months, inclement weather, as well as prevent my car from potential break-ins and theft, which has been a problem recently on our street. Thank you in advance for your consideration on this topic. Another one. Brian Pertle.
I refuse.
You've got a couple of them here, guy.
He's already hit us five minutes.
Well, they're last week, we then lost them.
Well, I just.
Meeting's over.
Okay. A couple more. These are, these are back from, okay, here's a couple. Here's one from the 18th, Adrian Gordon. Corona, I currently live in Sleepy Hollow and would like to have a shed. Ty Cobb, 17th. Good afternoon. There seems to be more families coming to Sleepy Hollow to find additional storage of sheds to be necessary. We are one of those families that we have lived here nine years this year. We had a shed when we moved in, and three years later, we were forced to tear it down. We were told it was not grandfathered.
It's a duplicate.
Okay, this is one from this evening. Steve O'Neill. Hello, I would like to express my concern and displeasure with the idea that the village is considering allowing homeowners to erect attached sheds in their yards. I have been a resident of the village of Sleepy Hollow for 28 years, and one of the reasons I found Sleepy Hollow attractive and unique was the open space concept with its long, unobstructed views and wildlife sanctuary status. What makes this current movement more disturbing is the fact that sheds are, is the fact sheds are allowed, but need to be attached to the house in the same siding as the residents, as the residents, as the other homeowners have done previously. This current ordinance allows homeowners to have the ability to expand their storage sheds while maintaining the beauty and uniqueness of our village. The village will not be able to monitor the condition and appearance over time to prevent dilapidated or unsightly building. The reason our code official is disallowed to enter a resident's property to inspect and monitor any code violations. I strongly oppose any change to this ordinance. Uh, and we got another one, Debbie Bresla. Reese's?
Bresla.
Bresla, okay. I have lived in the village for nearly 30 years. There are many reasons we chose this area versus Dundee. Large lot size, bird sanctuary, friendly neighborhoods, and the neat, cleanly organized look of the area. Love that there are not fences or snowmobiles or campers out all year round. We appreciate the current shed ordinance and find it easy to comply with. If sheds are going to be allowed, I think they should be strict guidelines. Must match house and only certain sizes allowed. I feel they should be regularly maintained and landscaped to complement the property. All this being said, right now, Sleepy Hollow Police Department and village has difficulty upholding current rules such as weed growth, earning ordinance, et cetera. I feel this is another thing that will not be monitored correctly and therefore cannot be in favor. If this goes for a referendum, the wording of what would be allowed should be clear. Thank you for taking my view into consideration. Okay, we've got another one from Michelle Reed. Hi, I've lived in the Sleepy Hollow since 1998. Love it. Their natural aesthetics, their natural aesthetics is what brought me here. I previously lived in West Dundee. My prerequisite for my new home was that I wanted to look out my window and see green trees. I take great pride in my yard, and so did most of my neighbors. When people visit, they always tell me how beautiful it is here. In the past several years, many houses have turned over to here younger families, and some more than others don't take as good of care of their property as before. None of that has been code enforced, to my view. I can't imagine it offered, I can't imagine it offering pair sheds sprinkled around as well. For so many years, the present code for sheds has been completely adequate. I don't see any positive in favor of changing it. Live within the code or move. I own every garden tool machine there is. Cut my own lawn, lawn with my own tractor. Have a smaller mower, snow blower, leaf sweeper, et cetera. And it all fits in just fine with me parking two cars in the garage. If the aesthetics don't suit you, move to a town that does, but don't ruin ours. Sidewalks included. Sleepy Hollow is a little spot of heaven. Please keep it that way. Okay, are there any others? We have missed this evening? Just, okay. All right, there's comments from the board. As was pointed out, there are other alternatives. You can have a shed as long as you attach it to the house with the proper footing and foundation, and you follow the permits.
Only five times cost of it outbuilding, but.
Well, it's a shed.
And that's good.
And it's an addition to your building.
The subject right behind your house and the lot line next to your garage, but again, doesn't fit everybody.
Okay, trustees report, roads and parks, Mr. Hart.
At the last meeting, if you remember, we had some concerned residents show up and address the board seeking guidance about the, what they perceive as the degradation of Lake Sharon. I can report that today, they met with a representative, actually, it's an erosion specialist from the Canadian Page Soil and Water Conservation District, and they discussed at length what options are available, and they will continue those discussions in the future. We'll see where it goes.
Okay.
It's all average.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, finance, George, I'll give you a break tonight.
Thanks.
Being a new guy, I expect it to happen again now. Okay, water and sewer, Joe.
I think Jeff covered it earlier, unless there's any other questions for me.
I don't have any. Thank you, Joe. Uh, police and public safety, Mr. Anthony.
I just want to welcome Chief Parma to his first board meeting during the bill. So, just welcome and hope to get to know everybody in the room because there's a great bunch of people here.
Looking forward to it.
That's all.
All right, thank you. Anything to add, chief?
Um, just an update on the Star Crime Radio System. I know it's been talked about for quite some time. We were supposed to go live last month, or actually late last week, didn't happen. There's a third tower that they're having some issues with that's interfering with Public Works in West Dundee. Until they can work that issue out and we can get all three towers working together, we can't go live. So we're working on it, and as soon as I can, as soon as that happens, the radio's already, training's done. As soon as that happens, we'll be ready to go.
Flip the switch, let me see.
You're telling us that.
All right, thank you, chief. Uh, public buildings and environment.
No report.
Thank you, Mr. Thor. Uh, building and zoning, Mr. Perino.
Now that we have a complete building board with the appointment of Mr. Hoffman, we should be open to hearing from and discussing whether residency issues that could make living in Sleepy Hollow more pleasant and welcoming community. The age of our residential population is changing as more houses of long-term residents are going up for sale. We're not the city of Chicago, nor Elgin, nor Atlanta, but instead, we are Mayberry. We're elected and appointed village board members, serve the residents who place their trust in us to be fiscally responsible, creative, solve problems, and move the village forward, not backward as living in the past. Village allows above-ground swimming pools, are the eyes source. As the building and zoning trustee, please give this idea some thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Okay, old business, any old business to come before the board? Old business to come before the board, new business. I got one item of new business that we seem to, that what, drop, bouncy houses. In the park. Bouncy houses.
Oh, okay.
In the, in the park. No, I have not been to the dispensary. The bouncy houses that they rent. Okay, we've got people reserving the pavilion, and they want to bring in bouncy houses. Those. I, I see the question of liability.
Hey, Steve?
Yes, Joe?
I, I've seen him at Randall Oaks Park quite a bit at the pavilions there. It might be worthwhile to just get a conversation with the Dundee Township Park District to see what their policies are there, what the issues they've had.
Well, that was what we were thinking about, is requiring them to file a declaration from their homeowners insurance company.
Is that what Dundee Park District does?
That was a suggestion that was brought to my attention that we could do.
Okay, because you see him at Randall Oaks all the time, so I don't know what their policy is there, but.
No, well, that's, that was the main thing, was the release of liability for the village. If we do this, we should, you know, have a release of liability for anybody leasing the and provide this insurance information to us.
They would want a minimum insurance on that. I mean, it should be more like they have at least an umbrella or, or a million dollars. I mean, because if, if that, I mean, because it wouldn't take long to escalate out of control. I mean, Dundee Township Park District can afford a heck of a lot more than the village of Sleepy Hollow.
You know, within the next several weeks of meeting with the park district, to discuss future seventeen, so we could bring it up at that meeting to get it firsthand.
I know what they do. Okay, all right. Okey-dokey. But in the meantime, if we have somebody that requests it, we will ask for them to provide some documentation of the insurance.
Yeah, this is full-time, full-time they want it down there?
No, they said just for their, their, just for their, or just for their money. They leased, rented the pavilion, and they want to put up a bouncy house for them.
Just for that.
Yeah, that's beginning to become a more popular request.
Okay. I might have misinterpreted it as more of a.
Oh, is it permanent? No.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Hope not. Okay, any other new business to come before the board?
I make the motion, we adjourn.
Moved and seconded. Uh, we've got people attending remotely. Roll call, please. Mr., excuse me, Mr. Nimmer?
Hi.
Mr. Hoffman?
Hi.
Mr. Thor?
Hi.
Mr. Hurney?
Hi.
Mr. Dally?
Hi.
Mr. Perino?
Hi.
Motion carries. We have a confirmed adjournment, folks. Six affirmative votes, no negative votes. We are adjourned. June 21st.